What's up?
I have it on line.
Okay, well, it's 7:01, so we'll call the meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, somebody wish to move agendas presented? Miles? Thank you. Any discussion on Miles' motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And says it's Carrie Gennaskey. Okay, moving on to the minutes of previous meeting of February the 8th. Any questions, air submissions? Hearing none, somebody wish to move them? Okay, well, Paul, I guess. So if Paul moves this, any discussion on Paul's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Minutes Carrie Gennaskey. Okay, moving on to correspondence. There's a letter there from Farm Safety Center. As it was said in the past years ago, we used to participate in it, but we haven't for quite a few years now. And we know that, you know, a couple of businesses and not sure what county, whether they participate or not, but... Any questions on that at all? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the Kukalde Solar Energy Center. A forest energy company is propose a development in the Kukalde area. This is different than the one we had two weeks ago or month ago. This one's on the east and west sides of Highway 23, South of Kukalde. Goes all the way through the British Sanctuary Road, south of the two miles. Okay, any questions on that one?
You would want to comment on the rightway? The only area concerned would be for the Water Commission with the rightway that runs through. There's pipeline, looking pipeline, I think so, runs right through this, this blank area right here. That's the rightway. It looks like they left an upper road on each side for the rightways.
I would hope that the Water Commission would have had something put into that, but...
Yes.
Okay, nothing else? Somebody wish to, George Lee moves the correspondence? Any discussion on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And that is Carrie Gennaskey. Okay, moving on to land use bylaw 1437-15, proposed amendments. We have a guest here tonight, Madeline from the Horsk. And so if you want to...
Where's a good spot for you to go?
More than here?
Actually, yeah, anywhere you'd like up here, about a mile, just by.
Maybe I'll just come out here. Watch over here, if that's okay?
You guys.
Hello, everyone. So I'm Madeline. To those of you I haven't met, I'm glad I have a chance to be here in front of council. So I'm with the Old River Regional Services Commission. And I'm just here today to present all our land use bylaw amendment. Bylaw 1496-21. So this involves a few different proposed changes to the Town of Vulcan Land Use Bylaw. And the purpose of the amendments are to bring the Town of Vulcan Land Use Bylaw into compliance with the Municipal Government Act in terms of application processing and timelines. To amend or add some specific regulations to provide clearer direction to the Development Authority and applicants. And then also to increase some development opportunities by adding some uses into a few land use districts, including a new use called specialty manufacturing. So I'm going to go through the proposed changes, which are shown in Schedule A and B of the bylaw. So the first points, one through seven, in Schedule A are really a response to the updated Municipal Government Act, which made changes in 2019 to timeline, timelines, requiring that the Development Authority determine if a development application is complete within 20 days of receiving it. And also that the appeal period of a development application decision is 21 days. So the changes that are proposed here are really to provide clear direction to applicants and the Development Authority related to development permit and subdivision processing. So one of the things it does is it makes clear that the Development Officer's role is also to determine when a development permit application is complete. So that's now specified in there that that's part of the Development Officer's role. And the new regulations also outline the process for determining a complete application, including the timelines, the request for additional information, and notice of completeness. So the addition of these regulations is really about laying out what happens when a Development Officer receives an application. When is it deemed complete? What is required to make it complete? If it's not complete, what is the next steps for that? And then what will be, when will the applicant know that their application is complete and already move on to the next step? So that is all now clearly outlined in the administrative section there. Another change obviously is to amend all the references to the development permit appeal period. So anytime that's mentioned in the land use bylaw, we are amending that now to be 21 days. Another change is to add in some regulations about subdivisions. So one related to the appeal period. We hear about development permit appeals. There is also an ability to appeal subdivision. It's more limited. It's just either the applicant can appeal conditions or government bodies, circulation agencies can appeal things. But we just wanted to put that information in there as well, so it's clear what that appeal opportunity is in the Municipal Government Act. And then also adding that a long reception that just talks through the process for subdivision applications, so that stakeholders understand the application requirements, the timelines, and the process for determining that an application is complete. So since we know that applicants are often doing not just development permits, but also subdivision, to have all that information together in the land use bylaw makes it easier to kind of for the office to point to where that information is and for people to understand that process. And all of this information is taken from the Municipal Government Act. So this means your land use bylaw becomes more of a one-stop shop for that. So that's the changes that are proposed as part of the updated MGA. We're also suggesting a few other smaller changes that through discussion with the Development Officer would make the development process a little easier, just clarify a few things. So in the memo, there's just kind of a table that goes to those, so I'll just touch on those changes. So point eight in the, in the Schedule A is to specify in residential land use districts that permitted signs are only in relation to home occupation. So right now, under the list of uses that are permitted in residential land use districts, it just says sign, which creates a bit of confusion because it's not very what kind of signs. And the regulations related to signs later on in the land use bylaw just talk about commercial and industrial. So it's kind of implied that, you know, freestanding signs, billboard signs, things like that are just allowed in commercial industrial, but it's not explicitly stated. So this change will just make it clear that when we're saying signs for residential districts, where we're just talking about signs related to home occupations, right? Because that's the only kind of commercial type use that's in a residential land use district. Another change suggested is to add mini storage as a discretionary use in the highway commercial land use district. So this just allows that use as an option where it may be compatible. Highway commercial has a larger typical lot size, which may fit with mini storage. And having it as discretionary still allows the Municipal Planning Commission to have some oversight on the right context for that. Another addition is adding office as a discretionary use in the industrial I-1 land use district. So once again, suggesting that it's discretionary, so that there is some oversight on what is the right context for that. But often, office-type developments can be quite compatible with lighter industrial developments. They want to have that opportunity. And also just sometimes we get lighter industrial developments that also want to kind of partner with an office-type use. So this allows those to co-look. Another change, the last couple of things here are just some kind of tweaks for clarification to just make the land use bylaw a little more understandable. So one was that accessory buildings of uses were kind of missing from the transitional agricultural land use districts. So it's plausible that someone doing that agricultural use in that transitional agricultural land use district would want to have a shed or some kind of accessory structure. So this just seems to be an oversight that that was missing from that land use district. So adding those in as discretionary uses. Adding a requirement that a principal building must be on a lot before adding an accessory building slash use to a lot. So this is the typical flow of development. You have a principal use, and then if you want to add something related to that accessory and subordinate to it, you can do so. But this regulation now just clarifies that you really should have that principal use or building established before you're adding the luxury accessory structures. It just makes it clear what the main development on the site is when you're applying for a permit. Permit and just supports more orderly development. And then those last two regulations is just clarifying how fence height is measured. So this may seem straightforward, but just explaining how the average grade is established and the fence height is measured from that, so that there's no confusion about how all your plans can go. So those were the kind of smartest board of changes in that Schedule A. So the final component of this land use bylaw amendment is a proposal to add a new use called specialty manufacturing. So this is some in Schedule B of the bylaw. So the impetus for this part of the amendment is that the Town of Vulcan has recently received an inquiry for a small-scale brewery. I'm not sure where that will go, but it just kind of opened up the question that we don't really have maybe a use that would support that kind of smaller scale manufacturing or production. So looked at a few different options for how to address this kind of gap in the land use bylaw. So it could be accommodate under existing uses such as manufacturing, application use, and the lounge and beverage room. But the problem is that these uses aren't listed together in any land use districts. So you still require a land use bylaw amendment to put those together. And manufacturing, application uses is typically seen as quite a large kind of development. So maybe not compatible with the smaller scale production. Was also looked at maybe adding a brewery-specific use, which some land use bylaws in Southern Upper to have. So that would include a specific definition and regulations for that. But that option is obviously very specific to breweries and doesn't accommodate other development types that might have similar land use impacts. So the last option was to amend the land use bylaw to add a specialty manufacturing use. And specialty manufacturing is basically just a manufacturing use that is, the size is restricted, so it's a smaller footprint. And that seemed to be the best option for moving forward. So a definition is provided for specialty manufacturing. That means development for small scale on-site production of goods in a building not exceeding 510 meter square gross floor area, including retail sales, display, and storage areas. Typical uses include, but are not limited to breweries, pottery or sculpture studios, furniture makers, and specialty food production. So you get an idea of what those, that might be. And then it is proposed that we add this use as discretionary in the retail, commercial, highway, commercial, and industrial land use district. So specialty manufacturing is a use that has been successfully adopted in other communities such as Condrick Creek, Grayland, and the city of Leipold. They'll have a similar kind of use. And as I said, the advantage of this approach is that the creation of a more general category means the town can accommodate a wider variety of potential businesses in the future under this use. And then listing it as discretionary still provides the Development Authority with oversight in determining how a specific development will fit into a neighborhood. And it also gives them the ability to apply conditions to the development permit to mitigate any impacts on adjacent development. So, did I read that? Lot of information for you guys. That was a summary of the proposed amendments. I'm happy to answer any questions. The recommendation today before you is to complete first reading on bylaw 1496-21 and set a date for the public hearing of March 22nd.
So your bylaw numbers that you're using is different than our bylaw numbers that you're using?
Oh, is it?
No, just the title on the, on the agenda is the original land use bylaw, which we're making an amendment to. So the new bylaw, when you scroll down of the draft, is bylaw 1496-21.
Description says land use bylaw 1437 proposed amendments. So that's the original one then, is the 1437-15?
That's right.
And then the bylaw will be the...
So we're going to, we're going to add these to amend that. So you have to do a bylaw to amend the bylaw. And then Horsk was good enough to add at the end, but we're also going to consolidate as well. So the bylaw 1460 will be consolidated into, which will allow us to immediately add it to and print a new copy that we can make available to the public.
Okay. So did that answer any questions that anybody might have had on that? It didn't for me, but we were talking about two different things. But anyway, is there any questions from Madeline or Paul?
I just have a question for section eight of the change. Just because I'm in real estate, the real estate signs were nice. I understand that they would be included, but sometimes it's not spelled out for people or anything.
Yeah, so...
Correctional signs, election signs.
Yep. And that's so, I just kind of picked those two out as an example. But in the signs section, there's kind of a full list of signs that don't require a development permit. And so then those are basically kind of allowed anywhere. And I believe, Nancy, if you off the top of your head, if residential signs are in that list?
I think it's for temporary signs.
Yes.
It better be, anyway.
You are.
You got a few signs up.
Because I mean typically those kind of want their temporary rights, so then they are allowed anywhere basically.
On the temporary ones, there is a size though, isn't there, that's allowable?
Yeah, well...
Bring it up.
It doesn't matter, I was just... I'm sure there must be a sign, size, it would be allowed within a residential area, that's for sure, but...
I can bring up the land use bylaw.
Got it right here, so, yeah. Keep talking amongst yourselves.
I know signage potentially could be, you know, one of major concern because, you know, more or less like Madeline had said earlier, if I have a whole business that's been put up, you know, eight by eight, you know, flashy neon sign that says I do home business out of my residence, I'm sure that the neighbors in a residential area would not be too impressed.
Anybody be able to put up what those signs that we used to have on the corner of, bringing the literacy, the four by eights or whatever quarter?
And those need a special permission?
Yeah, so I'm sure there's signage size, but...
I do have here, so don't require permit notices related to the sale, lease, or rental of building or lands to which the area touched, provided the notice shall not be eliminated, and each notice shall not exceed four square feet in area. And one notice for each of the land or buildings on a different piece of concrete, plastered building.
Mostly can't go bigger than, say, two by two?
Without requirement permit. So there's a, there's a number of ones here, you know, if you, obviously, if you have a sign for identification purposes on it, there are all these kinds of ones. So those are all, those are just allowed wherever, right? So whereas the home occupation sign is what maybe gets that permit for, so...
Any other questions for Madeline or... Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation and thank you for being forward so that we can... If there's any discussion on any of the proposed changes at all?
Do want to thank Madeline for coming. Because of COVID, she's been months waiting, trying to get in front of council to meet you guys. So we've been working with her quite a bit.
I know that, you know, you've dealt lots with Nancy and, and Paul on MPC and appreciate you taking the time to come on.
Yeah, hopefully they'll be more interesting meetings, it's going forward.
Okay, well, thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you like here.
Drive back, start and drive back. A lot of wind is not, it's very calm here now, so...
Well, we got a bit of gas mileage coming up when you came. Going home, you won't get as good. Okay, well, thank you. And so the proposal would be is to...
I've got the recommendation here, you can read it.
Sure, please.
That council give the land use bylaw amendment, bylaw number 1496-21, first reading, and direct administration to schedule a public hearing for this bylaw to be held March 22nd, 2021.
La? Okay, okay, thank you, La. Okay, discussion on Miles' motion? And then we'll call the question. It's Carrie Gennaskey. Thank you very much, Ben, Madeline, and Nancy.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Madeline.
Okay, moving on to current business, policy A20 organizational chart.
This week we were going through our audit. We were providing policy documents to our auditor and looked at our org chart. It hadn't been updated since 2017, and we've obviously made some structural changes inside. That most prominent, obviously, we don't have the fire department on our org chart anymore. And so we'd like council's approval to amend the organization chart to the current structure, including the current community services.
Okay, Paul moves this. Is Paul? Any discussion on Paul's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it's Carrie Gennaskey. Okay, moving on to policy number PE-8, job descriptions.
And along the same lines, when I did the org chart, I just wanted to make sure that the job descriptions all had the proper titles in them. We have been rewriting the job descriptions as the positions have been changed. One of the biggest was the reclassification of the guise for the union contract, which we all went through during the negotiation and things. They were approved as they were. So this is just updating this list to the current positions that town calls.
Okay, so George Lee moves the new job description org chart. Any discussion on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. And it's Carrie Gennaskey. Okay, moving on to Vulcan District Tourism Society dissolution.
As council, where you've all had a chance to read the report, and George Lee brought everybody up to date with the minutes and that from the last tourism society meeting. They've obviously made a motion to dissolve. And they currently have an outstanding debt of $1,834.17. And as per our funding agreement, the town and the county were the last two contributing partners to that, at 50% apiece. So there is a request from the tourism society for the town and the county to, to help them clear up that debt. And this can be done through the one-time grants to organizations. And upon completion of balancing their accounts, the accounts will be closed and paperwork will be filed to dissolve the society.
Doesn't that work best to do it through the small grants?
Yes, within our budget, yeah, that's, it wasn't budgeted for funds. And you do have a one-time, you do put money aside in the budget for one-time grants to organizations, so...
I don't know if George Lee wants to move that. Okay, George Lee moves that we allocate 50% of $1,834.17 to the...
Got a motion there if you'd like.
The only problem with that is that it doesn't go up to 17 cents. So I guess the county will pay the eight cents.
With, with, with the nine, yeah, it was the point five.
I know.
Yeah, somebody will pay more.
All right, which is fine. Okay, George Lee's moved this, any discussion? Hearing that, we'll have a call to question. And that is Carrie Gennaskey. Okay, moving on to written reports. We've got draft minutes of the County Chamber Zoom meeting of the Vulcan Regional Response to Elder Abuse Council. Any questions on that? Okay, hearing that, we'll move on to the draft minutes of the, I'm not sure what you call it, the, it's not a Zoom meeting, it's a email. Twin Value Regional Water Commission meeting. Not sure how that's done, but it's, must be legal, but never heard it done this way.
Oh, we've done it before.
I know, just because you do something doesn't mean that it's done right. I think if it was me, I'd give a legal opinion on whether this can be done, because I don't think it can.
We've asked, well, a few of us have asked numerous times that we meet in person.
Well, even if you mean by Zoom, I mean, but again, I assume somebody has done something on this. But I would, I would hope that some, there was somewhere a written response from somebody that this is a legal way of having a meeting for a commission.
Maybe worth contacting News Affairs to ask if these are approved.
I mean, you know, it's, it's an organization that we're a part of, so, I mean, you know, you want to make sure it's done correctly and nobody's liable for doing it incorrectly. But anyway, there is their draft meeting minutes of February 16th, which... Any questions on that at all? Sorry.
I was just going to ask George Lee, why she was against it. I, to be quite honest, I understand none of it, so you can tell me anything.
Because to me, there wasn't enough discussion on it. It was one person that came back with an email. And in that email, he basically told us what we should be voting on. And in my opinion, there wasn't enough discussion on it. And I didn't feel like I had enough information brought to me to vote in favor of that. And I made that comment and thought we should meet in person to get more opinions. And it was shot down, I said, nope. He gave us this opinion, he knows everything, so we're going to get one. So I said, I go, I'm not for that.
Okay, I just, I didn't truly understand what it was, so basically, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on... Okay, thank you. Moving on to the one, new one tonight, that was, came earlier. Well, I'm sorry, I apologize. The Municipal Planning Commission draft meeting. There's too many draft meetings there. So any questions on anything that was... I see you've got a new chair of the, of MPC.
You know, he's pretty good.
He's pretty good? Oh, okay, well, we'll take your word for it. Any questions for... Okay, hearing none on that one, we'll move now on to the new one that was sent out earlier in the call for us.
I draw your attention to almost the last line. The board is committed to addressing the lone agreement with town. Board is committed to addressing the loan agreement with town. I think we've got your attention.
Okay.
And will they be meeting with the?
Sorry?
And will the executive be meeting with the town?
Yes, the, not the whole executive, but the president, vice president, treasurer have requested a meeting of all night for tomorrow at two o'clock.
Okay, any other comments or questions on the golf course?
Larn, I don't have my glasses on, of course. The, under the town loan discussion on one, two, three, four bullets down, our current priority is to our membership and to put money back into the course in the area that have not received necessary upkeep in recent years. I guess I just questioned whether the priority should be to the, to the membership if they have an outstanding loan.
And it was a fairly extensive discussion on the board's funds. One of the things that was let go is tree trimming. And they're budgeting nineteen thousand dollars for tree trimming because it hasn't been done adequately over the last few years because they have been struggling.
Okay.
And that kind of expense they're concerned about. And I would hope you guys will talk about it tomorrow.
Okay, good, I didn't, when I read originally, I didn't realize it was a meeting coming up, so.
Okay, anything else on? Any question on any of the, sorry, Larn, did you have another?
No, I'm just gonna move the meeting reports.
Okay, Larn moves it. Any discussion on Larn's motion? Hearing that, we'll call the question. And it is Carrie Denabstey. Okay, moving on to verbal ones, councillor Taylor.
Obviously golf course, MPC, and the other one was the police meeting that several had scored at, which is, I found very interesting. I'm not quite sure where the province is going. Do we want the RCMP here or do we want the regional police? Prose and fines. I don't have what else to say about that one. And that's all, that was that?
Okay, any questions for Paul? Thank, oh, councillor Volt.
And it was also like the policing one, it was very interesting. And that opened your eyes to a lot of things that we would need if we weren't appropriately. And that's, it was really interesting. And I had elder abuse. And the baskets are ready to be given out with all the gift cards in it, the gift cards for like the gas, food, restaurants, stuff like that. They say that there's been a really big spike in elder abuse lately. And they're not sure if it's from COVID or if just more seniors are just finding out about this program. And then, you know, we need to step forward with it, right? Whatever the reason, there's a really big spike in them. The computer classes, they were really well attended and they're looking for grants and donations by March thirty-first of, just to help pay for the program managers we can keep her on, for a bit longer. And long-term care residents have struck up being pen pals with some of the students from the school. And that, so it kind of gives the people in long-term care, it's something to look forward to, the letters for their pen pal. And then today we had victim services. We just rechecked the insurance policy to make sure that the society is protected. And they're looking at upping the kilometer rates for people that have to drive out to court or to help victims and whatever. We'll start the budget at the next meeting and this budget will be for twenty twenty-two because they always save a year of budget. They sent out a call for donations on blankets, they didn't have those blankets to give out to people. And I guess, once they made the call, oh my God, tons of them, like they're all stored in this storeroom now, they said they got or blankets, now they know what to do with. But at least, at least it worked, people responded to it. And we signed a confidentiality and a code of ethics today, was signed by all the board members. And a lot of the meeting was talked about different ways that we could fundraise. And that because some of the grants had come back saying, no, they couldn't get them this time. So they're gonna have to be looking at doing some fundraising on themselves. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for George Lee? Okay, hearing that, thanks, George Lee, moving on to councillor Iverson.
I was at the MPC meeting and was able to make part of the PC meeting. I thought it was interesting, I also think they're, my opinion is they're shuffling the shells around, but no one's really fixing anything. It's my opinion. And I was talking with a potential candidate for October's election. And one concern that was brought up was, you know, being on council is fine, but the amount of committees that you might have to do line to be a councillor is a concern because that person is a, is a business person. And I just brought up the example of my position that you don't have to be on every committee, you can pick and choose. Imagine lucky enough that I, it doesn't interfere as much with my work, but it is a concern because sometimes you can't give as, do as long as you think you can. So that's one thing that was brought up.
Okay, thank you, any questions for Law? Okay, hearing that, thanks, Law, moving on to councillor Thomas.
I was supposed to have library last Wednesday, but apparently all of Chinook's Zoom meeting times were booked, so we are rescheduled for Monday night at seven. That's it? That's it, all we got left is library.
Councillor, any questions for Laura? Hearing that, thank you. Okay, moving on to councillor Roddy.
Nope, does not come into any features, go the way.
Okay, any questions for any of the channels? Hearing that, thank you, that will move on to councillor Shaw.
The only thing I had was the policing Zoom meetings and I guess my thought is I hope they're not rushing. To me, they seem to be moving quite quickly and that isn't usually the way things usually appear to go in, in government, but I think they're moving quite quickly and I think for the amount of money, I'm not sure we're going to, to gain anything. I think that amount of money could be put maybe into the RCMP, not that there isn't things that need to be addressed there, but I'm sure they, what they say, they were six or seven hundred on the last meeting, so.
Yes.
There's quite a few people probably going to express their opinions over the next living while, so I hope, I hope they look at it very carefully. And that's it, all my meetings are this week.
Any questions for Laura? Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to me, I did hear it from, at the, I think it was at the mayor's reviews, Colale spends fifteen million dollars a year in budgeting for RCMP in their community, is what they come up with. So they're one of the ones that have issues with the dollars and cents, you know, if you're under five thousand people, you don't pay a cent, you've become five thousand and one. And now all of a sudden, you have to pay substantial amount, so. But anyway, that has nothing to do with any communities that I was on, just something that came up with the one mayor's reviews. The, I had a meeting with the attraction and retention committee, it was trying to meet on a monthly basis, now they're moving it to quarterly. They're finding that because there's not an attraction, an attraction for a doctor that, you know, they question, why are they meeting on a monthly basis and so anyway, the decision was is to move it to quarterly meetings and try and still fulfill some of their obligations or questions that they could do, so. With SEWA, I had a presentation, it was, it wasn't Zoom, it was one of the Zoom style meetings anyway, with Rockyford Council, went really quite well. We know that with SEWA and we had that executive meeting after, when that was on the Wednesday night was the council, council meeting in Rockyford. And it was kind of neat, their MLA, he was in and he took part in part of the Zoom meeting anyway, so that was kind of neat. But at least their MLA is taking part in trying to get to their community by some method. And, but anyway, the SEWA executive had a bit of a discussion too and about, we realized that with the election year, that next year, there'll be a lot of, trying to bring the new councils up to speed of what SEWA is doing and where we're at. And by then, we're hoping that the ten point five million dollar grant that we've applied for will be successful and we'll be moving forward on, on something. I too, like Lorna, I have three other meetings this week, the last week's always my busy ones. Anyway, any questions for me on the other one side?
Okay, hearing that, somebody wished to move the council verbal reports? Any discussion on Law's motion? Hearing that, we'll call the question. And it's Carrie Denabstey. Great, moving on to the activity management report.
We were able to finish everything that was on the list from the last meeting and sure it's not just the outstanding items unless council has any questions on them. Obviously still working on the procedural by law, the natural gas franchise agreement by law. And majority of the others are works in progress.
Okay, any questions for Kim on, on the activity management report? Okay, hearing that, we'll move on to his.
So even the, at the pool, they're still working on cleaning up some deficiencies, that they seem to be going fairly well on that end. We provided all the information for the member at large for Community Futures and they've been in contact and share and be able to participate right away, which is, which is good. I updated the job descriptions for the development officer position, utility clerk. We did an internal posting as we discussed at the last meeting. On the staff side of it, you can see that we did the internal recruitment, we had Rob Davidson has accepted an employment offer and will start training on March fifteenth, which timing of that will be good. Brings him in right before the MPC meeting so that he can start through that. And then within two weeks, we'll be doing year reading and that for the utility runs sort of thing. And with this training time that we put together, it will allow for attendance at three MPC meetings and to do two utility runs, so. Hopefully, won't be as steep a learning curve as Nancy went through. So that went well. Still working on procedural by law amendments for the mayor appointment, just really, right now, we've got the template for the, the election process pretty much hammered down. It's figuring out how to do the rotation of the deputy mayors based on how they're first appointed. And then, you know, if a mayor is changed midterm or some, how, how they fall into the schedule for the deputy mayor, so. Just trying to figure out the right wording on that, so hopefully I'll be able to bring that back fairly quickly. The auditors have been in the office, they were two days last week and finished up today. And yeah, provided quite a bit of information, they had every desk in here full of paper shortly before the meeting today. So, and other than that, if there's any other questions, really, I've just been working on the policy amendments that you saw.
So we'll just do, look for somebody else to take Rob's place or we can just make it internal too? Whatever Rob was doing, get one of the other guys or.
He'll probably, he'll probably temporarily hire or move somebody up into that position and then most likely, on public works, most likely have to post for an outside position, but within that, those, as you guys know with the union side of the contract, one of the terms in the contracts is they have ninety days to revert back to their old position without any loss of seniority. So that's something that we had to work into that and that's why that training period that we set up, the way we did, so. So I'm not sure how quick, Steve would like to get the position filled because obviously March, we start getting busy doing spring cleanup, that sort of thing, so. Make sure that he has the amount of help that he needs for this transition as well.
You got it. Okay, any other questions for Kim? Hearing that, or can somebody wish to move the administration reports? Okay, Paul? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing that, I'll call the question. And it's Carrie Denabstey. Okay, moving on to the last one is adjournment. Michelle, thank you. Any discussion on Michelle's motion? Hearing that, we'll call the question. And it is Carrie Denabstey, so thank you very much.